Papers arranged and time to call this meeting to order. This is the July 23, 2007 meeting of the San Carlos and redevelopment agency. Will you please join in a pledge of allegiance which will be led by Boy Scout Troop 230, I'm sorry, Troop 321. This is 25 of the United States of America and to the Republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.[130.11][130.11](APPLAUSE). Before we move on, would the troop like to come forward and introduce themselves and tell us your school, please?
(INAUDIBLE).
Sure, right here.
My name is Frangos. I am a junior from Carlmont High School and I'll be attending Central State next year.
Okay. Yes.
I'm Stephen Frangos and I'm going to Carlmont this year.
Your brothers, I presume?
Yeah.
Yes, they got that, okay.
I'm Nicholas Frangos and I'm going to Carolyn Middle School this year, seventh grade.
You've got some great shoes, have you, Nicholas?
I'm Dan Welsh, I'm going to Carlmont this year, I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Dominic Welsh and I'm going to Summit at Rep. City, I'm going to be a junior this year.
Okay.
I'm Kevin Mulder and I'm going to Carlmont next year.
Very good. Thank you very much for leading us in our pledge of allegiance. It's always a pleasure to see the scouts here and we look forward to delivering our scout business in a few months. Turning to number two on the agenda, has changes to the order of agenda, are there any suggestions from the council or staff? Then the agenda will stand as presented. Number three, report from closed session, Attorney Landzone, City Attorney Landzone, the report from closed session.
Mayor, there is nothing for the council to report from closed session.
Thank you. Council given occasions and announcements. Anyone like to start? Matt?
I've got a few items here. First one is I did attend a meeting of the San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Providers, of which we are a member of that JPA. And there was a pretty contentious issue that we had to deal with really about funding for Woodside Fire Protection District, for Pacifica and for Colma Fire District regarding AMR and emergency transport to hospitals. And potentially, depending on how that went down that evening, we could have had an expense to our fire department of $12,000. But it was decided instead to take money out of our reserves and fund those fire departments so that they could continue their ambulance service. So we continue to have ambulance service with Woodside, with Pacifica, and also first responder service with the Colma Fire District. So I thought it was important to just report on that, I don't think anybody would have read about it in the newspaper necessarily. And then Councilmember Lucille and I attended, I believe it was last week or the week before, the mayor's appointed us to the, what is now called the San Carlos Transit Village Project Ad Hoc Committee. And we did meet with members of the board from San Trans and with their staff and talked about that project and where it is currently. And it is good to report, I think, that they've been listening to our input as the two council members and our staff. One of the things we were looking for was a bit more retail than they were providing originally and they have responded to that request. And currently, the way the project looks, although things could always change, I suppose, a bit, is there's 281 units of housing proposed and about 35,000 square feet of retail commercial at this point. So just wanted to report on that. And then finally, I had lunch with some folks from the San Carlos Children's Theater and I thought if Mark Luckenbaugh would like to come up to the mic and just tell a little bit about what they're doing, share some of the things he shared with me.
Hello, Mark. My name is Mark Luckenbaugh. I'm a 15-year resident of San Carlos and raising my family here and I'm also on the EDAC Commission. However, I'm here tonight to, as a member of the Venue Development Committee for the San Carlos Children's Theater. I'd like to thank Matt for his recognizing our organization in the June 25 city council meeting. The San Carlos Children's Theater was voted best of the best by the Bay Area Parents Magazine and we really appreciate your mentioning that as well. I'd also like to thank Barry Weiss who we have met with and talked about our plans and also Brian Moore who's given us some invaluable advice on our campaign. The San Carlos Children's Theater has been producing plays since 1990 and in that time, 64 shows with over 400 performances have been produced and over 2,000 children have participated. The value of this effort for our children is priceless. The value not only extends to the actors in the shows but to the families and the audience and the community as a whole. However, San Carlos Children's Theater has never had a permanent or professional venue for its shows. And given the history of its success, the invaluable mission of the San Carlos Children's Theater and the importance of the Children's Theater as an asset to the city of San Carlos, we feel that consideration should be given to a permanent home for the San Carlos Children's Theater. We think that this is an opportunity to build a facility that would reflect brightly on the city's image. San Carlos has always had a very large performing arts community and a theater would provide recognition for this constituency and certainly we have support from it. The San Carlos Children's Theater is the ideal organization to partner with Park and Rec to manage the events of this facility due to the existing relationship that SCCT has with Park and Rec and due to the expertise of the SCCT's staff and volunteers. The Children's Theater is maintained in part by thousands of volunteers contributing thousands of hours, lessening operating costs. And a new facility will lead to additional Park and Rec class offerings. It's difficult to imagine that the theater would have much downtime given the SCCT production schedule and due to the extensive interest in children's theater. However, the list of alternative uses is endless, including events that would generate revenue to help offset operating costs. So again, Matt, thank you very much. We, again, to reiterate, we've never had a home and we're looking for one, we'd like to work with you on reaching that objective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Matt?
I was wandering through the library today and I bumped into a meeting of about 38 people upstairs, the Joint Powers Group for the library. I'm not the delegate from the council to that, but I wanted to report that there were 38 people up there meeting today and tomorrow, talking about a long-range plan for the county libraries. And it was a very lively session, I only stayed about a half an hour and just observed, but it was very good. And I just wanted to let the community know that people are working on a long-range plan for the libraries, for all the cities that are involved in the joint powers agreement.
Thank you. Inga.
Report.
Good. All right, I have nothing to report either, so we'll move along to our presentations. Tonight we have the great honor of presenting a proclamation to a young man who's achieved the rank of Eagle Scout for the Troop 321. So we just, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit out of sync here. Hold on, it'll be right with you. Go back to number five, report to council. Are there any reports to council?
We have no reports.
All right, very good. Now we'll move to number six, presentation. The first presentation is to be by the South Bayside Race Management Authority. Is there a representative here from SBW in name?
We don't see a representative in the audience for this presentation, so at this point I think we would defer that to a later time.
All right, very good. This is to be a presentation of guest certificates for those who entered the recycling contest, if you will, recycling your batteries. And if you responded to a survey, they took your name and put it in a pot and drew some names and worked to make guest certificate awards. But you're all going to have to wait a couple more weeks to find out if you are a real winner. And it's worth waiting for because these are great prizes. So stay tuned, in a couple of weeks we should have the results of that drawing. Now, we have the great pleasure of presenting to our Eagle Scout, Elias Frangos, a member of Boy Scout Troop 321. So Elias, will you join me at the podium, please? Congratulations. Thank you. I'd like to mention a few things on this proclamation because they recognize the tremendous program that we have here in San Carlos and throughout the country, obviously, in terms of the Boy Scouts. We all know that it's a character-building organization, composed of young men who are seeking to prepare themselves as better leaders and citizens for tomorrow by developing those traits and strengths of character of all people. And we recognize that scouting plays a vital force in the lives of many hundreds of boys in the city of San Carlos who are guided by a great many adult volunteers who have given generously of their time and talent. And I must talk here just to especially recognize those who continue to work with the boys and bring them along the scouting program. There are dozens of adults who are involved beyond the boys as well. And over time, a good number of our community leaders have been involved in scouting. So we applaud them especially for staying with the program and continuing to work with the boys and to bring them into leadership roles. And now we have the unique and special honor of achieving that award as being earned by Elias Frangos of Troop 321. And so I, Tom Davis, Mayor of the city of San Carlos, have a great pleasure to congratulate Elias and commend him for his service and accomplishments in reaching his highest level of scouting. Elias, thank you very much. Congratulations.[820.12][820.12](APPLAUSE). And now traditionally, we want to hear from you as to what you did for your project. Anything else your mark can tell us about scouting? It's all yours.
So for my project, I helped out in county parks. I went up to Unibero Serra County Park in San Bruno and I rebuilt one of their self-guided nature trails at the park. I pulled out all the posts, there were about 22 of them. I tossed out some of them, but I did keep most of them, restored them, bought some new ones. And we're still working with the parks to put the signs on them, to finish up the trail. But I just, I thought it was a great idea to have this type of thing. And as for scouts, I'd just like to say that it's a great experience for all young boys. I know if it was for me and they should take this opportunity as they have it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[889.12][889.12](APPLAUSE).
And I've had an opportunity to walk that trail many times, the nature trail at Unibero Serra County Park, and so thank you very much for the work you're doing on it. I'll have to go back and enjoy the posts in the proper place with the proper designations. It'll be a great improvement for the park. So thank you and again, congratulations. Okay, now it's time for public comment. This is a time set aside for anyone wishing to address the city council on members not on the opposed agenda. So if you're here to tell us something that's not on the agenda, now would be your time to come forward. And seeing none, we will move on to item nine, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for a separate action. Council, any requests for removal? Staff, anyone from the public like to remove an item for discussion? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the calendar?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent calendars, items nine A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Do I need to read a resolution?
No.
Okay.
All right, Christine, roll call.
Councilmember Eric Lucilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Teague Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Bluecott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davidson?
Yes. Item 10A is a consideration of implementation of a red light photo enforcement program. We're not ready to present this for discussion tonight, so it has been continued to our meeting of August 13.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We would suggest that in case someone did not see the notice on this agenda, that we open the public hearing, hear any comments from someone that might have come tonight to speak to this item, and then continue the public hearing to the 13th.
All right, very good. Would anyone, we will open the public hearing and continue it. Would anyone here like to speak on the issue? Seeing none, we'll order that the hearing be continued until August 13.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know, do we need a motion?
Do you need a motion for that?
Not to continue. I think we should have a motion in the record, yes.
Motion, all right.
I would move continuation of Agenda item 10A to August 13, 2007.
Second.
Line favor.
All right.
Okay. Okay, moving along to item 11A. This is consideration of agreement with Calendar Associate Architects, Inc. for services associated with renovation of Heather School Athletic Field with either natural or synthetic turf. Mr. Weiss?
Mayor Davidson, members of the council, you have before you tonight a request, there's a returning request from previous council direction. It is recommended that the city council authorize an agreement with Calendar Associates Incorporated for services associated with possible renovation of Heather School Athletic Field, selecting either natural or synthetic turf. You also have as one of your attachments a comparative analysis between synthetic and natural turf. If the council were to choose natural turf, staff is recommending that you authorize staff to negotiate the lease agreement with the San Carlos School District, consistent with the draft that you have as attachment one. That you approve the enclosed California Environmental Quality Act categorical exemption that was prepared by the Community Development Director, attachment two. That you approve the project consisting of removing existing deteriorated natural turf irrigation and drainage installation of new natural turf irrigation and drainage. And then lastly, that you authorize a professional services agreement with Calendar Associates for services as outlined in their proposal for services, which basically would be preparation of plans and specifications and the design of the natural turf field. Should council choose synthetic turf as your option, staff is recommending that first you authorize staff again to negotiate the lease agreement with the San Carlos School District. Two, you authorize staff to conduct an initial study for the California Environmental Quality Act and prepare and release a request for proposal to select a consultant for preparation of that document. And third, you authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the selected company from the request for proposal and Calendar Associates for services associated with preparation of those environmental documents in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Should the amount exceed $50,000, by law, we would then return to council for authorization as being more than $50,000. It is recommended that the city manager defer execution of any professional services agreements until a satisfactory agreement is attained with the San Carlos School District. Again, as mentioned, you do have a copy of the draft, there will be some adjustments necessary as recommended by council, early termination and what the impact of that would be, it would be one of them, and then a cost of future repairs and improvements would be another one. As far as the fiscal implications of these rather lengthy recommendations, we have identified funding in the capital improvement budget. We have identified $1.7 million that comes basically from developer fees and the Fund 27 Park and Lou Fund. Of that $1.7 million, $500,000 is in anticipated donations. These donations could come from the community or a contribution from the school district. The city council may wish to make a formal request of the school district for a funding contribution regardless of whether you choose natural or synthetic turf. You also have the implementation schedule in the report for both natural turf and synthetic turf. And again, staff recommends that neither of those begin until we have a long-term lease agreement signed with the school district. That summarizes the report. I will not bore you with, I summarize in all the attachments because we could be here a lot longer, but at this point I will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Barry. And before we go to questions for Barry, I'm going to just go into the audience. First of all, we want to thank you for your patience in bringing this to a discussion where fellows appropriate and important to have all five council members present and here are. So we scheduled it as quickly as we could after the former date agreed to. Secondly, we do have comment cards from various members of the public and I will invite you to come forward after the council has a chance to talk to Barry about the recommendation or the report. And then you each have an opportunity to speak to the council. If you would like to be scheduled for a discussion with the council, please pick up a comment slip, fill it out so that we have a record of who was here and who spoke. All right? So with that, Barry's ready to answer questions. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first. I have a couple of questions just to start it off. On page three of the report, Mr. Weiss, it shows about 300-day total to put in natural grass and about 565 days to put in synthetic turf.
Correct.
My question is, in the report, I believe it says that they anticipate that synthetic would possibly last upwards of 10 years, I believe. Is that the number I think they used?
That's a commonly accepted number. Could, most companies warranty for eight years, some beginning to warranty for 10, and it's anticipated some fields may last as long as 12, even up to 15. 10, we feel is a safe number to anticipate.
Following on that, would you, and again, I apologize for putting you on the spot, I probably should have asked you this earlier. If we put in natural turf, is there a timeframe that you would anticipate that we would have to go in and replace that natural turf?
That is really a factor of usage. If we maintain our current practice of limiting usage on the natural turf, all natural turf fields, to maintain a safe playable surface, we could extend indefinitely without having to replace it. If we get to a situation where we overuse the field and it becomes unsafe and we have to replace the surface, that could happen in one year, which happened in the case of the city of Piedmont. So it's really a factor of use. Our current practice is that we regulate the amount of usage so we don't have to do that.
For the chair, may I ask a following question? Barry, do you remember how many years ago we actually redid that field?
Heather?
Yes.
I have, I don't know, I came here in 2000, it was done well before that.
For the chair, we've never redid that turf, we just repaired it, repaired some old irrigation system, it was never redone.
So we haven't put the same investment into Heather like we have in Burton or some of the others? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. As I said, we probably have a couple more, but those are the first two that came up. Thank you.
Good.
Along the time difference that's in the report, there's 265-day difference between natural turf and synthetic turf. But I guess approximately 180 to 200 days has to do with the environmental review process for synthetic turf because of, you know, the possibility of doing sequo. Have other, how have other cities handled this situation? Have they all gone through an EIR? Or can you tell me when transitioning athletic field or field from grass to synthetic turf? How do other cities, have they handled it?
As you know, there's different levels of environmental review, everything from the categorical exemption that you have in your packet for natural turf to a full-blown environmental impact report. We did do some research of neighboring communities and where they took an existing natural turf field and converted it to a synthetic turf field, all of them went through a negative declaration. They did not go to a focused environmental review or a full-blown environmental impact report.
So there's roughly, in the 565 days, there's roughly six months of time or so, I should say roughly 200 days that have to go through the formal EIR process?
We put this timeframe in, and I will ask for these to jump in and help me if needed, we put this timeframe in to be conservative and give us kind of the worst-case scenario. If it could be speeded up, we will, of course.
So if we didn't have to go through that follow process, then we'd save 200 days? That's what I'm...
We could save some time, yes.
Okay. My other question is, in this report, I know it's been, you know, we've gotten a mountain of information of this over the years, and I believe it just wasn't addressed in this particular report of calendar, but we've always talked about Heather, if we were to make the decision to go with synthetic turf, that it actually increases the dimension of the field and increases the playability against, you know, more age groups than are currently there, which also increases participation, not just in numbers, but increases participation with regard to age groups. But it wasn't necessarily in this, the dimension change. So A, I don't know if it was factored in the additional aisles that would be available, but do you roughly have the dimension change difference in the playing field?
I do. I took that big notebook you were talking about and went through it and pulled out things I thought might get asked. By making the current dirt infield synthetic turf and taking the little sliver of asphalt that the school district, or the principal of the school has already indicated she's willing to give up, we would pick up 11 percent. We'd pick up another 98,000 square feet, which, the importance of that is, it would allow us to put a U-19 field there, which gives us tremendous flexibility on what we schedule there. And the more flexibility we have to schedule, the more we're able to lessen impacts on all our other fields.
Those are my questions for now, thanks.
All right, Matt? Thank you. The first question has to do with, on the report, just above, on page two, just above background, there's a sentence, two sentences that talk about 500,000 in donations and then the possibility of making a formal request to the district. I suppose that could also be a sort of an either-or. In other words, go to the district, ask them to come up with 500,000, whether or not they do that through donations or through their own funding, it could be left up to them.
We would leave that up to them, yes.
Yeah, okay. Under, on page three, I noticed under natural turf, there's a weather delay, but no such weather delay under synthetic turf. Is that, would it altogether be unnecessary with synthetic to not watch out for what's going on with the weather?
I'm going to defer to please on that one.
Councilmember Bluecott, if you look at the schedule, it looks like if we go by this schedule and the city council approves natural turf, it's most probably the natural turf will be under construction in the winter of 2008. However, the synthetic turf, based on that schedule, will be under construction possibly summer of 2008, so we didn't consider any weather delays.
Okay. Follow-up question to that then is if we ran into, say with the environmental impact report, some delays, so forth, we potentially could, if, I guess the question is sort of... is sort of rhetorical. If we, if we got pushed into the winter because of, say, a delay on the EIR, we might end up having also weather delays in that case.
Correct.
Okay. And then, this is kind of a follow-up to Brad's questioning, and I didn't quite get the answer I was looking for. In the preparation and release of RFP for environmental document, we're looking at a full-blown EIR there, or are we looking at just a negative deck?
We're looking for an environmental document at this point.
Without defining it?
Without defining it.
Whether or not it's any...
Correct. It would first go to staff. They would decide what level of review is needed.
Okay.
And then, proper person would perform it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Nanga?
Just had a couple of questions. One, specifically, when you say an under-nineteen field, generally, the under-nineteens play actually during the weeks out and after, after-school type of things or in the evenings. So just because it would be designated as an under-nineteen field, the probability that we'd actually use it for under-nineteen games is probably pretty low, especially during the peak season. Is that, would you concur?
Well, what we do is, when we parcel out field time, we give it to the organization, and then we let the organization decide what they do with it. So if the, either of the two soccer organizations chose not to play a U nineteen game because the kids weren't available, that's okay. But it would certainly on weekends be available for a game, and the more that we have, the more flexibility we have for additional practices going on. And again, the more flexibility we can have, the more we can lessen the impact on existing other fields.
Okay. And then, the, just to be clear, the half a million of donations that you think could be picked up, I know Brad and I, in talking to the school district, I mean, they're sort of doing the same thing we are, just in terms of shortage of funds and things like that. Have you gotten indication from other community organizations that the half a million dollars would indeed be something that might be able to be picked up out of the community, or?
We do, we have no indication. We've not done that outreach, waiting to decide what direction we're going to...
So at this point, really, to be conservative, we have approximately one point two million in capital funds. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Just a couple of them, Barry. One, it relates to the agreement, and I see it's a, and I realize this is a draft agreement, but in the process of reviewing it, I noticed that it's a thirty-year agreement, which would imply that we will replace the turf presumably at least twice during that agreement. What if we are able, let's say, and you intend to do something with a sports complex? We've talked about that before as one of the options. Is there an out for this agreement, or is suggested out so that we can, we can get away from maintaining this field, or are we stuck with this for thirty years?
We would need to create the language that allows the city to do that, and the district would do the same on their side, to what works best for the entity.
Okay. So that's totally negotiated with the school. All right. Then the question regarding the difference in cost between the natural and the synthetic. The natural is about four hundred and forty-six estimated, four hundred and forty-six thousand, and a million five on the synthetic. Why do we need a sixty thousand dollar design and bid process for the natural? It seems to me you go in and you scrape off the old, and you plow the ground, and put some additives in, and recreate the irrigation, and then you put in sod.
And until I started doing projects, I agree with you a hundred percent, but you need to design the irrigation and the drainage and the grading primarily.
Yeah. Will there be other things added to it as well? Are you talking about backstops and the fencing, seats, toilets, whatever?
As you may remember from the Fields Committee, what we talked about is, if we went synthetic with Heather, if we went natural turf, we'd leave it like it is. We'd have a single backstop, and maybe feel pretty much like it'd only be a better field. If we went with synthetic, then we would add, we'd replace the backstop at the north, at the southwest end with a better backstop and carve out a better infield, and that would allow additional flexibility to bring in more play, particularly in the youth arena, and specifically for girls' softball. Girls' softball, as you know, is growing in popularity. They're, they tend to be, seem to be our biggest growth industry in the youth sports in this community. And we don't give them just Heather Field because that's our worst field right now. So they, they, they and Little League share Heather and Highlands and Stadium and all the, you know, real good fields, too. So we would, that would give us an additional field for the Little Leagues and the girls' softball. Again, that increased flexibility, that would help.
Okay. Thank you. The final question I have is on page twelve of the calendar report. We talked about potential additional capacity, and it's interesting that the month of July, apparently, we have no use now under the natural turf, but we would make it the largest use month under the artificial turf. Can you, can you explain why we don't use that now and why suddenly we would use it to the extent of three hundred and fifty hours a month?
Because we close it for maintenance. As you may recall, we close each field, each natural turf field, for a six-week period, and that six-week period is somewhere between April, October, the growing period. And we choose, we close Heather in July because that has the least impact on the community. And so that's why it shows nothing, and if we didn't have to close it for maintenance, you could play on it.
And then, if you use it in July to this extent, what would you do? The teams are pretty well completed, aren't they? Or are they operating in July? I'm familiar with the timing.
It's pretty much completed. Both Little League and the soccer are pretty much completed. There are some traveling teams in soccer, some traveling teams in baseball, so there would certainly be some use. We would run camps up there. We, as you know, we have put a cap on activities on our fields, and that includes our own parks and recreation programs. And I know staff has ideas for camps and clinics and everything else, even leagues that they'd like to expand, and so that could happen in the summer. What, I think what this chart shows, and what we're looking for our staff, if we go to the synthetic, is the increased availability. And I would pretty well guess that we could use it.
Okay. And I think that's all for follow-up questions for Barry. And we do have, thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
We do have a number of requests to speak, and I'll take these in the order received. First, Deborah Calkins, followed by Mike Murphy. Deborah? And when you come to reporting, just please give us your name and city of residence, and we'll have that for the record. Thank you. Hello?
Good evening. Deborah Calkins, City of San Carlos. I'm actually here, and it's kind of disappointing that I'm still here, but I'm here in regards to how physically irresponsible I think that it would be if we put in a synthetic turf up at Heather Field. The cost of doing a natural turf is one-third of what it would be for your synthetic turf. You could do three fields. So based on that, the hours that you figured for your incremental hours of increased use don't hold water. Nothing that you've given to us in terms of numbers to justify this works out to the numbers that they seem to be crunching in regards to coming up with the figures, particularly when they sit down and do natural versus the synthetic. You would have to be able to play seven hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and that's just not going to happen. You can't get use of that field until after school hours, and you can only go until it sun sets. That's not enough hours and not enough time for you to be able to justify any of that. You've got to remember, I hear you were just a few weeks ago arguing over whether or not we were going to put doggy bags in the park, a two thousand dollar item, and now all of a sudden, we're going to spend one point seven million on a synthetic field. That's what you're considering. Let's think about it. You need to set an example. You need to conserve those funds. You've not done that, and you're looking for the taxpayers to take on this burden. Remember, we're going to have to replace that field eventually again, especially with synthetic, more so than if you take good care of that natural field. That field has never been done, never been well-maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Murphy, followed by Lisa Hatzinger.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Michael Murphy. I reside at three Port Marina Lane in San Carlos, and our home is in the Heather School neighborhood. I've been watching the continuing discussions regarding the use and issue of recreational fields in San Carlos, in particular in Heather Field, as some of the solutions would have a negative impact on our home. I would like to address the proposal as before you tonight. First, I'd like to say that I do appreciate that the draft joint-use agreement between the city and the school specifies that field lights will not be installed at Heather Field and Heather School, and believe this is essential language which must stay in the agreement. There are two points I would like to raise with you concerning the proposal before you. First, the staff has recommended that you authorize an agreement with Calendar Associates and possible action with respect to Heather School, but delay the implementation of that action until a final joint-use agreement has been signed or approved. I believe it would be more appropriate to wait to see the final copy of that agreement before you take any action. You've waited this long, it seems like years. That is an essential document. You should wait until that's in front of you because it is going to have a substantial impact on people like ourselves. And there should be a public hearing at that time to consider the action and its impact that it's going to have on the affected homeowners. Second, the Exhibit A of the Calendar Associate's scope of work states that there will be continual meetings of teams that will address this issue, and that it will include other stakeholders. I view this as a positive response to the concerns raised by homeowners who live around Heather School. A new homeowners association, Heather Neighbors, has been formed, and I would ask that this new homeowners association be recognized as a stakeholder in the process and be involved in those discussions and meetings. Your decisions and actions related to Heather School will have an impact on us as homeowners, and we have a right to be part of the process that will have an impact on the value of our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Hatzinger, followed by Jeff Grace.
I live in the Heather School neighborhood, and I went...
Your name is?
Lisa Hatzinger.
Thank you very much.
And this is restating the obvious, and even if I didn't live in the Heather School neighborhood, I would really strongly believe this, that we're talking about an elementary school where you have kids between five and, say, ten or eleven. And I really think that first and foremost, that the concern should be of what they're doing at school. And I honestly believe that grass is the best place for our little kids to play on at recess, not to go rolling around on, you know, ground-up tires and plastic grass. That being said, my, among many other concerns, one concern of ours is our house sits right below the field, and right now, the drainage burn that's up there is in very bad shape. And so I need to express my concern about what's going to be done. If you do make the decision to put synthetic turf in, what kind of effect will that have on the drainage into all of us who sit below the field? I think that's a question that needs to be answered. And it's really imperative that the city install a system to monitor water flow so that if there's any excess water coming down into our yards, that that is caught before it becomes a big problem. And I'd also ask that you would take responsibility for any problems with drainage that may arise if synthetic turf is installed. So when you vote, I'd like you to think about, if this is your backyard, what you would do, recognizing, of course, that our kids do need fields to play on, but it's such a huge impact that this change can have, and so I'd ask you to think about it in those terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Grace, followed by Dr. Rosenbergen.
Jeff Grace, San Carlos. Before I start my comments, I just point a clarification, give Barry a question regarding Heather School and if it had ever been renovated. The answer is yes, it has been. In late nineties, San Carlos AYSO and Little League paid for that renovation, where all the sprinkler system was completely taken out and renovated. Surface was completely redone. So yes, Heather has been renovated in the last ten years. Two years ago, the Citizens Committee was impaneled by this council to review the field issue. Recommendations were presented in two thousand and six, in April and May, and the council reached a decision. The number-one recommendation was to install synthetic turf at Highlands for a couple significant reasons. One, synthetic turf would hold up to older-age group of children or youth and adults better, and lights would provide additional playtime on the synthetic turf. Council did not vote on that number-one recommendation, and for reasons I'm still not clear about. There were a number of items discussed during the council's decision, and some of no factual merit, such as toxic wildfires, consumption of toxic materials by children at the school, toxic runoff, displaced herds of deer, and even increased intravenous drug use, things that have no factual basis, and experts have come in and testified to that fact. While I believe the best use is still of our funds is to install synthetic turf at Highlands, I request that you make a decision based on the real facts, and the calendar report does clarify the real facts as far as environmental impact, toxic issues, and so forth in there. I support synthetic turf installation at Heather School. I cannot support the installation of natural turf based on my opening comment about renovations that have already been done at Heather School. I believe we can come up with a very good agreement with the school district, but I still am very skeptical about the maintenance of the fields up there, even with a good agreement, and so therefore, I cannot support natural turf up there. Water is going to be a huge issue going forward. We could be facing restricted water use, restricted water allocations, and the cost of water is going to continue to rise, impacting the natural turf. In comparing the costs of the two, natural and synthetic, when you take into account the ongoing maintenance costs for natural, it's pretty much a wash, and you get much greater utilization when we go to synthetic turf. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Rosenberg, followed by Paul Cannon.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. This has been somewhat of an exercise in futility. I'm Dr. Alan Rosenberg. I live on, above Heather Field, overlooking it. What the outcome of this vote has to do with me is important for several reasons. One is my happiness, and the other is my property value. The futility has been such that I don't suppose I need to review the whole thing, but it's been going on and on and on. At one point, the issue was decided. I am, as you may judge, in favor of natural grass. I'm a member of the Heather Fields, Heather Field Organization, whatever it is, but I'm speaking for myself. And there's, there's a lot of, there's some confusion, it seems to me, on the statement of what this is going to be tonight. This is, I'm reading from your agenda, "Consideration of an agreement with Calendar Associates for services associated with renovation of Heather School Athletic Field with either natural or synthetic turf." Now, are we voting tonight for natural or synthetic turf, or are we voting for an agreement with, with Calendar Associates for a later determination?
Let me clarify that. We are voting on the agreement with Calendar Associates, but it's our intention to also determine a preference for either natural or artificial. So hopefully, when this is all finished, we'll be able to make a decision for or against natural or artificial, and in favor of Calendar, should we proceed with either one of... should we proceed with either one of these.
So that we are not voting tonight, to make it perfectly plain, on whether it is natural grass or synthetic turf?
We are voting tonight. But bear in mind that if we vote for artificial, there's a number of steps along the way. The Environment Impact Report will follow. Design Factors will follow. Doesn't mean we actually are doing it. It means that we are moving in that direction.
But it is not decided finally.
Well, finally in terms of the next step. The next step is the Environmental Impact Report, which will have to be approved.
So my exercise in futility continues?
No, I don't think so. I think this is very important.
And may I have the presumption to make a suggestion to the city council? It would be nice to know how each of the council members is making up his or her mind when the decision is finally made. That would be very useful for us in determining how we feel about the city council.
I think, Dr. Rosenberg, that as we have our discussion here, reaching to a decision, you will, that will be very clear.
Well, it's been pretty clear in the past, it seems to me, that some of the members had their minds made up long before the discussions began.
Well, it's, it's-
And there was a vote, it was decided at one point. The votes were, one vote was changed, so that brought on, what is it? A year and a half since then? This further delay?
We're aware of the history. We all understand that.
You're aware, I know. But I'm just letting other people know that this is the case, and that it would be useful when the decision is finally made to know on what basis each of the council members made his decision.
All right.
His or her decision. And that's a suggestion that might apply, again, this is presumptuous perhaps, to other issues beside this one. But thank you for the opportunity. Well, no question. Medically, natural grass is much preferable. Cost basis apparently has indicated that the natural grass is preferable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for replying to my question.
Thank you.
Paul Cannon, followed by Catherine Tynan.
Good evening. Paul Cannon, San Carlos resident. First of all, I'd like to repeat what was said earlier. I appreciate the fact that the city has recognized the need to balance use and impact and inclusion of the language prohibiting the use of lights at Heather. And this is a very good step, and it's something that should be recognized. However, impact also goes further, and I think it would be good to include language that covers the appropriate bathrooms at the facility, and as well as banning of overnight camping and RV parking. If we're going to encourage large sports events, it'd be tempting to use this as a staging area. I think that would have way too much impact on an area. And we're also trying to encourage use of area hotels. And clearly, allowing people to camp out in the neighborhood is probably not a good way to generate extra income. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Tynan, followed by Michelle Morges.
Good evening. Thank you very much again for the opportunity to speak one more time on this issue. Many of you know that Heather Neighbors are formerly incorporated into a nonprofit organization. And I am the president of that organization, and as such, representing a large number of individuals in the Heather neighborhood. And we would like to acknowledge that we were given access publicly to the JPA. We appreciate the fact that there is language in there with regard to the installation of lights at Heather, in particular that it would not be allowed. We would like to see that language extended beyond the agreement, i.e. that it would hold should the agreement be terminated. We also would like to say that in the Calendar Associate's report, they suggested that you include other stakeholders. And by that, we think that Heather Neighbors should be represented at the table, because this is going to be a significant impact on our neighborhood if you choose tonight to vote for synthetic turf. And I believe that the votes for synthetic turf reside in front of me, so it's a three-to-two. And I'm preempting. I realize I'm being presumptuous. But additionally, we would like to insist that if you go down the route of synthetic turf, that an EIR is conducted. And we will really move aggressively to make sure that an EIR. There are way too many people involved in this. There are way too many people that are downhill of the site, and there are way too many people overhead. It's a very, very sensitive space. And we want to make sure that all of our concerns are itemized and that mitigation is put in place to address those issues. Thank you very much.
Catherine, what is the name of your group?
Heather Neighbors.
Heather Neighbors, okay. All right, Michelle, followed by Ray Morala.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you again. Again, I'd like to repeat my appreciation for including the language of no lights in the draft JPA agreement between the city and the school district. I do believe it needs some more detailed language to also include a statement of no conduit. This is a neighborhood that is a peaceful environment, and the neighborhoods would feel more at ease if a language stating no conduit would be included in that agreement. Otherwise, I feel that it leaves an opening for the possibility of future lights or requests or amendments to the existing JPA. As it stands now, the draft agreement does not address noise control or traffic issues or hours of use. I request that the agreement prohibit the use of loudspeakers or PA systems, and that the sports activities conducted at this site, at Heather Field, be age-appropriate for an elementary school, and that no adult leagues participate. Additionally, I have some comments on the cost. The cost of $1.5 million for one field during a time that the city is experiencing budget cuts is not physically responsible. Therefore, $1.5 million is not readily available either, and we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. I do feel that if the board does decide to suspend this $1.5 million and obligate the city, that the funds be used for a number of fields that are city-owned and not leased. And should the board decide on synthetic, I request that a SEQA report or evaluation be conducted to address the adjacent open space and the fire zone that it exists in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ray Morala, followed by Greg Harris, followed by Rob Holden. And Rob is the last speaker slip I have. So if anyone else would like to speak, come forward when these gentlemen are finished and complete a slip, we'll hear from you as well.
Hi, I'm Raymond Morala. It's gonna be a short night, maybe, then. Hey, this is a tough issue. What we're talking about is increasing participation in our fields, mitigating the limitations of use on our limited resources, our fields. And there's no better evidence of how tough this issue is than your faces. I watch you guys on TV. You're a jovial group. I haven't seen you guys crack a smile since we started this discussion. So I think that kind of is testament to how serious this issue is. And I just wanted to thank you guys. I don't know where you're gonna go tonight. I honestly don't. But you guys are humans. I know there's been a lot of pressure put on you guys over the last couple of years. I know that there's been some swaying back and forth. I don't know that I'd want to be in your chairs tonight to have to make this call. It's a tough, tough call. And I just want to tell you guys that I appreciate you, guys being a generalist term, that I appreciate your willingness to go forward and tackle this issue. I do think that most of you, I think that all of you probably have the best interest of our community, the community of San Carlos, in mind. And I think that's gonna guide your decision-making. And whatever you decide, I think that it's gonna be guided by that. I'm gonna quote a guy named Robert Louis Stevenson. I didn't know he was until a couple of days ago. Apparently, he's a poet. He had kind of a barometer for measuring things, and his barometer was that the mark of good action is that it appears inevitable in retrospect. Now, and if we apply that barometer to this question, maybe we can feel a bit better about what we decide. Good luck to you guys today.
Thank you. Greg Harris, followed by Rob Holden.
So despite the controversy in our community, I think there's something that we could all agree on. And that's if grass, natural grass, were practical, we would all be in favor of it. Well, my read of the calendar proposal says that plastic is not practical, and in fact, grass is the only practical. We could put in grass costs, one-third of the cost of plastic, based on the calendar. We could redo three fields in San Carlos for the price of one plastic field. We could replace Heather Field once every three years in the same period of time that plastic would last. So grass is by far the most practical decision you could make here tonight. I think there are two points relative to the money that are worth focusing on. The first is that calendars analysis, while I think it was fairly balanced and fair, missed a couple of things. The first one was that the long-term savings associated with plastic over natural grass makes the assumption that we're gonna fire staff and gain back those salaries. That was never stated anywhere. It was stated in the meetings that we had over the summer. The second thing is that it ignores some costs, including the cost of an environmental impact report. And so it understates the cost. It overstates the benefit. And finally, if there's one thing we heard throughout the summer in the Fields Committee, we heard from the school district at least twice every meeting that there was not one red penny available for this project, and by all measures, there never will be. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. And Rob Holden.
My name is Rob Holden, and I'm speaking actually as a former member of the San Carlos AYSO. I was on the board for five years, the last two years as a regional commissioner. And I just wanted to address one specific comment about donations. And while I'm not in a position to make any commitment, I can tell you that during the tenure that I was on the board, and at least two years when I was involved as commissioner, the issue of raising fees to help pay for a field was brought up, and consensus of the board is that we could do that. We're able, at this point, to provide a very cost-effective program, thankfully. I think the league, as Jeff Grace had mentioned, has historically, you know, supported improvement of the fields where it could. I know at least one of those years, we discussed raising the dues for the players. There's over 1,500 players typically each year in order to help support something like this. I know this issue's been discussed by other youth field groups, because we need the fields. And there's always competition for the fields. And I know everybody, someone's always doing without because of the reduced playtime on the fields. So while I'm not at liberty to mention a number, I know that there's support, because we voted in favor, and we had funds set aside. We just never had a project to fund. So I'm hoping that you'll come up with a project, because I think you're gonna find a lot of support from the youth groups in general for something like this. That's it.
Thank you, Rob. And I see a few more speakers coming up. Danielle Huerta.
My name's Danielle Huerta. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I live on Glasgow Lane. I actually wanted to read a letter sent by a neighbor of the city council today. Dear City Council, San Carlos City Council, another reason not to install synthetic turf is the increased noise produced from echoes that come from playing on the synthetic turf. There was an article in the June 30th, July 1st, 2007 Examiner that discussed the increase in noise from Notre Dame, Denny Mira University's new $1 million artificial turf field to the surrounding homes. The article was written by Jason Goldman Hall and is titled "Residents Raised In About Noise." The first line of the article says, "Despite Task Force Talk, Notre Dame's summer sports have Belmont locals irritated. The increase in noise must be noticeable, since the article states 'The university is considering commissioning an acoustic study of the field and surrounding area. Sincerely yours, Gus Detto, Non-Collman Court, San Carlos.'" I would add that further in the article, it mentions that despite whatever they might be able to come up with for acoustic abatement, their thinking is it will take at least 10 years for any kind of screen that could be planted out of trees. So any kind of solution to the problem they've created is a long, long way off. And I just wanted to reiterate that I support replacing the field at Heather with natural field, and that it would be much more cost-effective and lead to a better solution for the surrounding area, as well as upgrading the use of the field and the quality of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see a couple more coming forward. Karen Mulhoney, followed by Sharon, I believe it is, Del. Was Sharon Del? Sharon, I'm sorry. I got it. Thank you. Karen.
Hi, councilmembers. Mayor. I wanted to tell you that I as well appreciate the efforts and the time that you have spent in hearing from the community. Three years ago, I stood before you and said I wasn't involved. I live next to this field. I want to be a part of the process. And while I wasn't chosen to be on the Fields Committee, I do appreciate all of the hearings and forums that you provided to us as citizens to share our concerns with you. And I just want to reiterate and remind everybody that we had such a large turnout from this community on this issue. And it raised so much emotion, and something that I'm hoping the community can rally behind and continue to be involved in and support our youth sports. At the same time, I have to tell you that my personal preference is for natural grass. I, as a resident with a young child, with the environment diminishing around us and everything we hear about climate change and everything that we're faced with, I want there to be more natural open spaces for my daughter in San Carlos. And I hope that you'll consider that in your choice. If Heather goes to synthetic turf and potentially Highlands, my daughter would spend her entire school-age career and preschool and playing at Highlands, then she would go to Heather and play on synthetic turf. If she went to TL, she wouldn't have turf. And then when she gets to Caromont, she'll have turf. So she'd probably spend most of her school-age career playing on turf. That's a concern to me. So I hope that you'll consider natural. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sharon Del.
That's Sharon D., and I'm a Heather neighbor also. And just quickly, it's a ditto on everything that's been said. I won't cover anything again. But what does concern me? On July, a couple times now, I've had experience on the synthetic turf. At Caromont, when we were doing the breast cancer walk, and the temperature of the synthetic turf, you could not, it was unbearable. And I believe at one of the meetings prior, I actually gave a long report on the difference in the temperature of synthetic turf, you know, as far as what grass would be to the synthetic turf. But recently, there was a one-pitch softball team going on in Redwood City, and they put in synthetic turf this winter. They just put it in. Now, I was told, and I don't know the details of it, it was a substandard synthetic turf that they did put in. But the fields all need work right now. that they did put in, but the fields all need work right now. I mean, I couldn't believe when they told me that they just put it in. So I know there was some talk about how long synthetic turf would last, but it hasn't even been in six months. So, and then the other concern, I mean, there were a lot of players out there, the temperature wasn't even 80 degrees, and almost every one of the players complained about the burning of their feet, just standing out in the field on the synthetic turf, and it wasn't even a real hot day. So I just want to kind of reiterate that. I know I've passed to you lots of reports as far as the temperature of that, but since I just experienced that recently, I just wanted to kind of reiterate that. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. I see a couple more coming up. I can follow them. Thank you. This is Monique Barry.
Good evening, council members. I am a neighbor, and I am living below the Heather School, and I haven't heard what you intend to do with the deers dropping if you use a synthetic turf. I'd like to know what you're going to do with that, because you're not going to keep the deers out of there, and they belong there. That's their park.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question, and we'll answer it later, but just make sure we understand it?
What are you intending to do with the droppings? The deer will drop when they're in the water.
Oh, deer dropping?
Yes, the deer dropping. And there's plenty of it. What are you going to do with it on the synthetic turf? I haven't heard that being addressed.
That's the first time the question's been asked, I believe, but it's an important one to answer. All right?
Okay, I have nothing else I can say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You're on.
Hey, thank you. Brian Randall, San Carlos, a soccer coach from 30 years ago. Played at Heather Field. I'd like to say the condition of the field now is the same as it was then, all those years ago. I think it's had wonderful support. They restored the gopher problem, but we handled that then. We kept patching up the holes. After all, they've been there a long time, a lot longer than we have. All right, now, when Councilmember Brad Lewis ran for council, he stated that he was primarily here for his soccer supporters, and I believe he should recuse himself from this vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other commenters? All right, this is not a formal public hearing, but we will close the public hearing, so to speak. The council now will discuss it amongst themselves, and we hope to reach a vote this evening. So, any further questions from Barry might be the right place to start, or from staff? Well, are we done with Barry?
Actually, I just wanted to confirm one of, I believe it was Lisa, who brought up the question of the drainage. And my understanding from everything I know about the synthetic turf is that it would drain the same as if it were natural turf. Is that correct? However, you wouldn't have the pesticides and some of the other fertilizers and things like that generally that you would have with a natural turf field?
Synthetic turf actually increases the runoff. It's substantially more runoff than natural turf. But to answer that question is if the city council selects synthetic turf, the environmental document would address the drainage and the impact and how we should mitigate.
Okay, thank you.
Barry, I had one, and it was the last speaker, actually, in terms of deer droppings. I presume any intelligent deer would give this stuff a wide berth, but assuming they wander across it and dribble a little, what is the maintenance process in keeping this clean and tidy and?
Well, my anticipation is the same as yours. With no food source there, they won't go on the synthetic field. But if they do wander across and leave droppings, it'd be just like what we do when the dog owners leave, or when the dogs leave droppings. We pick it up, and if need be, we wash it down.
So we talk about a substantially reduced cost of maintenance, but there's still an oversight process where your field crew goes out and inspects and makes sure things are clean, neat, and tidy and so forth?
Absolutely. Best management practices, call for regular inspection. We would not just walk away and ignore that field.
Okay. Though I have you, let me ask you another question. I think the first speaker brought up an interesting point. You can't possibly play 2,050 hours a year. That's seven hours a day, 365 days a year. How is that number arrived at, and is it a reasonable number?
You can put extra people on the field. That's what creates the extra use. So whereas now maybe we would have two teams practicing via synthetic, particularly with, you know, a little bit of extra space we're going to add on, you could maybe have four teams practice, and you could have two U-10 games going on at one time instead of one like we have currently. So that's where you get the increased usage, because you can put more people on it at one time.
So the number of use could be, at one point in time, could be two or three hours based upon the number of teams that are practicing at one time?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I understand. Any questions for Barry? Looks like we're happy. Thank you. All right, it's time for the council to come to grips with this issue, and we would like to determine this future course one way or the other, and so now is the time to speak your piece. Who'd like to start?
If I may, before I go into my comments, I just, I did want to address, there was one of the public speakers that talked about doing an agreement with the school district first, and I think that was prohibitive in that we need to decide what kind of field we're going to have, and then that would be included in that document. So that's why we would just have a draft document right now and not negotiate that item prior to making this decision tonight. I think I'm correct on that.
Good point. Maybe to rephrase Matt's comment, the school district wants to know early about before we finalize the agreement. So we're taking the lead at this point in terms of making that decision. Then we move to the school district and work through the agreement process. Any others?
Oh, I'll go first. No one wants to go first, but I will. You know, this has been an issue since we came onto the council, since I came onto the council 18 months ago. The one thing that people have always asked me, "How do you like your job? What do you like doing this?" And I've always said, "I enjoy the people, staff, folks we sit up here, the folks in the community. I enjoy all that. What I don't enjoy is the process, because I come from a different place when things get done a lot quicker." I understand that it's the public money, however, and I'm coming to grips with the fact there is a process, and once I get over that hump, I'll be, probably be a better councilperson. But having said that, I know that probably the preferred use, if everyone had a perfect world, would be to put, as was mentioned by one of the speakers, to put artificial surface in Highlands Field. And early on in my thought process on this whole project, I discounted that. I feel that Highlands Field gets a huge amount of use right now. They have lights. I drive by there at least two or three times a day to my home and back and forth downtown. It is in constant use, and I believe that that neighborhood, in that area, deserves a break from this artificial surface usage. So even though that might be a preferred situation in many people's minds, and might be the best overall, if you eliminate dollars and everything else of, just on usage and play, I discount that right off the get-go. And that's why I moved to Heather, to try to split the baby, as I would call it, Solomon-like. I'm sure that whatever decision that I come up with will not be a popular one in some areas, but that's the nature of the beast of what we do up here. I looked at the numbers, and I realized that it's three times as much, approximately three and a half times as much to put in the artificial surface. I also looked at the time involved to do this, estimated by our report, 565 days versus 300 days. You make assumptions when you make a decision like this. My assumption is that hopefully we'll get close to 10 years if synthetic surface put in. I'm not sure that the natural surface would last as long, even if we perhaps have less usage, as Mr. Weiss said earlier, because that's what we do now. We try to basically have less usage. I think the synthetic at Heather Field will give a huge amount of flexibility to the other fields. I think by, again, letting them perhaps lay fallow even in a better time than what they are now, and perhaps at better usage times. Certainly, weather-wise, when it does rain again, and God willing, it will rain here sometime, we need the water. The usage, again, for a synthetic field is much better than if it is a natural field. I think the investment is worth the dollars, and I know, again, that could be discussed and argued on both sides, but my opinion is that it would be. I agree with the speakers, as I have from the beginning, that I will vote and consistently speak to no lights at Heather Field, and I would certainly even put in, as one of the speakers said, no conduit. I would be happy to add whatever language is necessary in an agreement to make sure that we don't have either of those. Water usage is important to me. I think at the moment, we have a possibility of another year next year when we may not have water. We're not sure. And in doing so, I know the usage of water for an artificial or synthetic turf is far, far, I think it's approximately eight to 10 times less than a regular field, and I think that should be important. Also, as was mentioned by Councilwoman Tickle Doherty, the environmental items of keeping away either gophers or weeds or any other things that we have to put on the fields to make them playable. I believe it's an advantage to have a synthetic situation. Also, for, one of the speakers spoke to the issue of noise, and I would also concur with that speaker about no loudspeakers, no bullhorns, none of those items that I believe have come into play at the Notre Dame Field, which was also mentioned, but what I would say would be banned completely from the field up at Heather. We have to work with the school district on this. We're going to give them our recommendation. They have to sign off on this also. We have to have an agreement. It has to have a length of time. It has to have pros and cons on both sides. Again, this is not an easy issue to talk about or decide, but I've decided that I would be in favor of putting on synthetic turf at Heather Field. And I hope I've, as one of the speakers said, asked for reasons. I hope I've given some of those. I would be happy to elaborate, either publicly or privately, on that if the answer isn't complete for those folks. But those are my comments.
Thank you. Matt, would you like to go next?
Sure. First, I just wanted to segue on one of the things that Mr. Priscilla mentioned, was referring to Michelle, I don't know her last name, but she was speaking about the agreement, asked that there be no loudspeakers, and I would concur. She asked that there would be some language about age-appropriate activities at the site. Mr. Priscilla didn't mention that, but I would ask that that be the case if we're going to go, especially with the artificial turf. And I think that item would be something for the, to negotiate with the school district on what is meant by age-appropriate, but I think probably what this individual is concerned about is the juxtaposition of adults or even high school use versus the hours when kids are getting out of school and so forth, to keep some separation there. As far as no conduit, I don't know, I certainly concur with the feeling, however, the logic I don't think is there. Probably Mr. McTary or Mr. Weiss could tell us otherwise, but I think conduit is necessary for other things other than lights, and so the project would need to run conduit for those purposes. Could you comment on that?
Sure, we can specify no conduits for electrical wiring.
There you go. Okay, got it.
That's what I was going for.
Yeah, very good, and I would concur on that. Now I'll go into, so those are points that I would concur with Mr. Priscilla on if we were to go with artificial turf. However, I'm not inclined to go with artificial turf. And I'll first start with, in my own mind, jury's still out on artificial turf anywhere. I do have my concerns with the product. I think heat issues are major, and as the one speaker pointed out, I think sound issues are also a concern, and especially at this particular location, because it sits up high in San Carlos, as opposed to, say, if we were talking about Tirolinda, which is, you know, down low over there by Carmont High School, and across the street from Carmont High School anyways. And so I won't say a whole lot about being opposed or for artificial turf, because, like I say, in my mind, the jury's still out on that. But for this site in particular, I am opposed to it. Part of it is because I just look at the age-appropriate issue, which was mentioned by one of the speakers, that, you know, this is an elementary school, and it just doesn't seem, doesn't feel right to me to put in artificial turf at an elementary school. You get to middle school, you get to high school, you know, I could be convinced otherwise, but for an elementary school site, I don't think it's appropriate. I think the traffic impacts to this part of San Carlos, those streets, Melundy, the way that neighborhood is configured, I think we're looking for trouble. If this report is correct about the number of hours being increased, you're talking, that many hours is, you know, quite a few. The 2,500, that's over 100 days. That's nearly a third of a year when you just look compacted in terms of what that looks like as time. And I don't think that community is ready for that kind of impact, and I think if we go this route, then we need to go for an EIR report, as was some speakers talked about, to vet that issue. I don't think, in my opinion, just a negative deck is sufficient. And that brings me to the next point, which is just process of, you know, the timeline process and the cost. I appreciate staff being conservative, but I don't know that we've been conservative enough with these numbers of 565 days, because I think we're opening ourselves up to what the mayor and I both voiced last time, and that is, just going through the EIR process, being challenged and so forth, seems to me such, so much more appropriate to go the route of natural turf at this particular site, get it finished, get it over with, and have a field that we can use that's much better than what we have now. And then just the factor of cost, even when you look at it over a 20-year period, it still costs a lot less. The way the math has been done in the report, it costs less per hour of use for artificial turf, but when you don't have the money to begin with, why does that matter? So I would rather do a project that we can afford and then look at the possibility of artificial turf at other sites. And I'm still thinking in my mind, as I did back when we addressed this issue at the youth center, that the site that I would look at myself is Tirolinda, because I think that field has the, is in worse condition from all kinds of things, and improving it, I would think, would give us the flexibility that we're looking for, the extra use, so forth. I think I've already hit on noise, so I won't repeat that, but that, so those are my reasons for continuing to be opposed to artificial turf at this site. I would rather we went forward with an agreement with calendar, with the understanding that we're looking at natural turf, and also the negotiations with the school district.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes.
So you're turning lines on?
Yes, thank you. Before you go further with your comments, I just wanted to frame, again, the issues before the, that you decide tonight, all right? You're not deciding, you could decide, the way staff has presented it, to vote for natural turf. You've already got a negative deck, that's before you, the natural grass, I mean, categorical exemption, and you could direct the staff to negotiate a final lease on that, and we could proceed on that course. So that's a yes and a no vote. On the synthetic turf, all you're doing is giving direction, as it's listed 1, 2, 3, and this would be a draft lease only, just giving direction to go forward to look at a project for synthetic turf, okay? You're not making a final decision to do synthetic turf until you get the appropriate environmental document on that project. You can't make that decision until you get the appropriate environmental document, whether it's a negative declaration or an EIR. So I just want to have you keep that in mind. You'd be, you could say no to natural turf at this time, and we want to go in the direction of synthetic turf and take it further down for a decision at another time when you have the appropriate environmental document before you. And we wouldn't be negotiating a final lease with the school district on synthetic turf. That would simply be a, probably a draft lease to come along at the same time, so it would all be in front of the council at a future date. I just want to make sure that's clear.
So we can say no to artificial, but we can't say yes to, or we can say yes to natural, but we can't say yes to artificial?
That's correct. Not tonight. All right?
Yeah. All right. Who would like to follow up that bit of clarification?
I guess, I guess I'll go next. Wanted to just start off by thanking all of you on both sides of the, of the argument here about, for participating and for coming out time after time to let us know how you feel about this, because I think the public process has been really important for me as a council member, as well as to make sure that we represent the community at large. And just a bit of history, we've been looking at the same issue now, at least I have on the city council, for six years. We've got too much demand and not enough facilities, and that's the whole issue. The other issue is that we just don't have enough available land. I think in a perfect world, we would basically come up with a new sports complex, and we'd have unlimited funding and unlimited land. Unfortunately, we don't have that. So we, as a council, are forced to look at the available land that we do have, and how do we get maximum utilization out of that to meet the demand? As many of you know, you know, this has been going on. We've got people on this in the youth sports, we've got people actually in adult sports, girls softball, they've all come out and they've really expressed the need that they've got more players, and looking at childhood obesity and a lot of the overweight challenges that some of our youth have. at childhood obesity and a lot of the overweight challenges that some of our youth have, I think it's a good thing to be able to provide facilities that allow our children to get out and to do more out in the, you know, outside. And if that means that we need to increase, or need to change the turf in order to accommodate more hours and more playtime, I think we need to consider that. Now, just in terms of my decision-making, I think I've looked at basically three things. I've looked at cost, because as an elected official, I am a steward of the taxpayers' money, and I do feel, I take that responsibility very seriously. I also looked at sustainability. We can't continually look at things that are not going to allow San Carlos and us the Bay Area to remain sustainable. And then the third piece I looked at is participation, because I think we do need to look outside of just our neighborhoods and really look at the overall San Carlos as a whole. From a standpoint of priority in this case, my top two priorities were sustainability and participation, and this has been a tough decision all the way around. I have certainly not made up my mind or made a decision one way or the other, but I think that there's a reason why, not just here in the Bay Area, but across the country, more and more municipalities are looking at synthetic turf as an alternative to replace natural turf. And this isn't something that's sort of brand-new. If you look at neighboring communities, there's a lot of fields that are being replaced with synthetic turf from the standpoint of cost, cost savings, as well as increasing playtime and allowing more players to come on the fields. And so I really, I think we owe it as a council to the people who are standing or sitting here and have been with us through this to make a decision and to communicate that well and to not continually kind of go in back and forth, because it's time to make a decision. So I would agree with my council members that have already spoken about, you know, some of the refinements to the agreement to make sure that we're working with the community. However, I believe that we need to, to look into synthetic turf as an option and not continually be investing in natural turf at this particular field, because I think we, even though overall long-term it looks like natural turf may be slightly more cost-effective, I believe that the impact in terms of water and some of the other costs that would be associated with that probably are going to rise, and it's going to end up being a wash long-term. And then from the standpoint of safety and safety of the players that we do have on the fields, I think the synthetic turf is actually much more, much better as from a health and safety standpoint. So I'm prepared to vote, or to direct staff to prepare the environmental documents for synthetic turf at Heather.
Thank you. I think I'm counting two to one at the moment. Would you like to go, or would you like me to go?
Your pleasure. Go ahead. Again, I think I've been involved in the fields issues in some way, shape, or form for almost six years now. It's continued to sort of vex Park and Rec Commission, Park and Rec Department, and it's a tough decision for everybody. I mean, we're a growing community with limited outdoor resources, and outdoor resources are expensive. But to me, this is primarily about increasing participation. There's no doubt in my mind that an active, primarily an active youth sports community, but an active community is one of our, one of our core values in San Carlos across the So then we come down in the analysis, it's in the report and all the different things that we've studied over the years, and part of it's the cost-effectiveness, and I realize that synthetic turf has more money up front, but I fully believe that in the long run, that it is more cost-effective. In the report, it states that if we increase participation by 35%, it becomes cost-effective. I think that the field with increased dimension and the fact that it can handle more, a greater cross-section of the youth age-wise and adult community, that we will exceed that, and it'll be more cost-effective than the 35%. I realize that this has an impact on the neighborhood, and believe me, you know, none of us take lightly any of these kinds of things, we have impact on neighborhoods. I do think we're stewards of a growing community and to take all the community benefits at hand when we make our decisions. Heather has had this level of participation in past years. It has had the projected increase in hours on that field in past years. I realize it's increasing where it is now, but it's not necessarily increasing where it has been in the past. But I do know that there'll be some increase in traffic there. I think that we, as a council, have to look to different neighborhoods bearing the burden of increasing participation on their fields, not just one. I think if the council's pleasure is to go in the direction of, to analyze synthetic turf, I think that will be part of it, that it will impact Heather, I understand that, the neighborhood. I've had a lot of experience on artificial turf fields. I've had experience on every one of the natural turf fields in town over the last 20 years. I've been on artificial turf, it was 100 degrees out with people with young adults and football pads, and I've been on grass. There's been days on grass where we told the kids to come off the field, it's too hot to play today, and I'm sure there'd be occasions on synthetic turf when that would happen, but I haven't seen there be a gross difference in my experience on the fields. I have had positive experience on the synthetic turf fields. I happen to think it's also important for the school. I know during the school year, the rainy months, I think that the kids at Heather School will get more outdoor exercise if we have a synthetic turf field on there, which is national turf. That field never drained well, there's always going to go for issues. The maintenance, it's hard to predict what the maintenance is over the years because it's a difficult field to maintain. And I think it's an upgrade to the school facility, I think it's an upgrade to the community. So I would agree with some of the comments that Councilmember Grisilli and Councilmember Teague-Doherty have mentioned tonight, and I would like to see us pursue the direction of installing synthetic turf up at Heatherfield.
Thank you. Well, let me complete the argument for the minority. I think it's the growing spot. First of all, I'd be complimented with the Calendar report. I think in a few pages, they brought into focus the preference for artificial turf when you're looking at the ideal situation. I don't think this is the ideal situation. I don't think Heather is the place to put artificial turf. As we talked before, I personally believe that Tirolinda is a much better site. It gives us the opportunity for two fields, and I believe that the ultimate fix is a sports complex somewhere in the east side. And we talk about this, I know there's no financing, I know there's no site, but there is a general plan review that is going to be starting. It will include a process that will analyze the east side, that can be considered. We started a park and recreation master plan, and that sports complex idea should be a part of that. So I believe, moving ahead to Heather, we're kind of wasting our time. We're adding 200 days to the process, assuming that we get it approved through EIR, and I think the EIR is going to be a formidable process. Anytime you add 67% to your playtime, as it has been, and try to get that through environmental impact report, you've got a real problem. And I think that the time delay in bringing a field to solid use, which you could do with natural turf, plus the added burden on the neighborhood, which I think is out of line, you know, considering the location of Heather and how it fits into the canyon, how the noise travels and so forth, I just think we're asking too much. And so again, I say that Heather's the wrong spot. Artificial's fine, but not at Heather. I also think that we're going to have to watch carefully how do we negotiate with the school district. We're, in 30 years, we're not going to give a shattered plastic rug back to the school district. They're going to demand something be done to fix it. And so we're quite likely to be looking at, get a third replacement at a million-plus to go back to them, assuming we decide to terminate it. So there's ongoing costs here that I think are fair, state, as stated in the report, but I'm not too sure they're complete in terms of looking to the inevitable process 20, 30, 40 years down. And in that period of time, folks, if we, if the city got behind it, we could raise the money, we could build a sports complex, we could have lights, we could have fields, we could have parking, we could have whatever we want to have, and whatever we're willing to pay for. And I think this community is willing to pay for a good solution. I don't personally think this is a good solution. So I wouldn't belabor the argument. I can see the council as pretty much where they were last time we talked about this, and I think it's probably time to move on, move into the EIR, take the next step, and keep it, keep the process going. So that's my take. Any other comments, or is there a motion?
I will, I'll make a motion. I would move that we authorize staff to conduct an initial study for CEQA and prepare and release a request for proposals to select a consultant for preparation of the required environmental documents related to synthetic turf installation at Heatherfield, and that we would authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with that RFP consultant and Calendar not to exceed $50,000.
Second. Through the chair, do we, should we add to that motion that after negotiating, Mr. City Attorney, something to do with the negotiation with the school district, or?
I think it'd be fair to state that we could proceed with, to negotiate a draft lease agreement.
Okay. I just, through the chair, I didn't, I didn't.
Do we need to provide that direction to staff?
Sure.
So that, I would then also move, or request that staff continue to work with the school district to update the draft lease agreement to bring to council for future consideration.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded. Any other question, comments?
Just some slight discussion, or not really discussion, but just to make sure that it's clear, especially since I intend to vote against the motion, but I do want to reiterate the support, as I said in my comments, to the agreement regarding conduit, lighting, loudspeakers, et cetera, and I think that's partly what was put in.
Very good.
Factor in the motion, so.
Well, and Matt, just to, my, my take on it is when the lease agreement comes back to the council, at that point, staff's heard our discussion, and obviously we'd be trying to incorporate some of those points.
I understand, I just wanted to add strength to that position, though.
So that's to be part of the process. All right, I think we're ready for roll call, please.
Councilmember Teague-Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Brokot?
Yeah.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much, folks. The process continues. You'll have an opportunity, I'm sure, to be involved in the EIR discussion, so keep your ear to the ground, and we'll see you again. Let's move on to item 11B, the report on impact of vacant recreation supervisor position for youth and adult athletics and options for service. It's not that they're not interested, Barry, it's just that, you know, you gotta, you gotta move on.
Happened to me many times.
I understand.
Mayor Davis and members of the council, you have before you a report on delaying the hiring of the recreation supervisor for youth and adult athletics and what service implications that would have. Staff is recommending that you accept this report on the impact of leaving the supervisor vacant for another six months, which would take us through December 31st of this year, and then to also approve the service impacts as recommended by staff. As you may recall, you voted during the budget issue to delay hiring the supervisor for six months. That would save the city a little over $62,000. That would enable the city council to maintain the youth center as a youth-only facility, but also provide $25,000 to both the information technology division and the Parks and Recreation Department in the general fund budget for this year. Staff is recommending that the impact be as listed here. We would continue to provide adult softball and volleyball, facility scheduling, budget management, all the administrative things, adult basketball, and then our youth volleyball and basketball programs, and our contract sports camps for youth. That would result in cancellation of two staff-operated youth basketball programs, one of which had already been canceled for the summer because we've been without the supervisor for 11 months already, and then also cancellation of the middle school basketball leagues as run by Parks and Recreation, which is completely separate than the school programs, which of course would continue. There are a lot of opportunities for youth in San Carlos, but few options for adults, and our youth basketball programs have been experiencing declining enrollment. There are other options, as mentioned in the report, for youth in San Carlos. Many San Carlos youth are already participating in the numerous examples I list there. Everything's from the two middle school teams to camps and clinics and different private leagues. We also list the alternatives, should council choose one an alternative, and we detail the impact of not having the supervisor and what services are affected. We also detail the $25,000 that we pay for. Primarily, it would provide assistance to the recreation coordinator to continue the programs as listed, specifically adult basketball, youth volleyball and basketball, and facility scheduling, and the citywide special event permits, which we assume from the planning department to help mitigate their 2006, 2007 budget cuts. At this point, I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
So we'll meet your needs by authorizing the cancellation of the two staff-operated youth basketball programs, is basically what we would be doing here?
That would be the only cancellation. You would see, and there number two, the delays and a lot of the other things that would not happen because we don't have a supervisor.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Any questions for Barry? Any motion for Barry?
I'd make a motion to accept the report, and item, alternative number one.
Second, then?
A second.
All right, we do have a second from Councilmember Brokot. Any roll call, Christine?
Sure. Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Brokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teague-Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Next item is item 12A, consideration of approving the creation of a change membership and appointment process of an ad hoc general plan advisory committee. Mr. Fay, how are you?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. As we embark on the general plan update process, staff is recommending the appointment of a general plan advisory committee, or G-PAC committee, and G-PAC's charge would be to examine various issues, provide direction throughout the process, and create a public forum to discuss the issues that are going to come up during the general plan update and also take public input. The committee would guide the development of the goals and policies that are developed in the preferred general plan update, and also eventually would make a recommendation to the planning commission and the city council. The G-PAC is intended to be a knowledgeable body that broadly represents the broader community. And in terms of the proposed membership, staff has worked with the consultants on creating a list of representatives throughout the community, and this includes the quantity of the members and also the specific interests that they would, they would represent in the community. Community members that haven't been formally named for the G-PAC would also be encouraged to attend G-PAC public hearings and communicate their needs and concerns at those meetings. All the G-PAC meetings would be publicly noticed and widely advertised meetings and allow a lot of flexibility for public input. And it's recommended that the G-PAC contain a total of 14 members comprised from established city commissions and committees, as well as citizens from the community at large, and those are contained in your staff report, and I'm not going to go through each one of those right now, but I'm certainly available to answer any questions. But in terms of the, of the appointment process for the G-PAC, with regard to that process, G-PAC representatives 1 through 8 would be individuals from established city commissions and committees and/or organizations, and staff recommends that the council authorize each of these bodies to appoint their own people to the G-PAC committee. G-PAC representatives 9 through 13, however, would be individuals throughout the community with specialized interests, and historically, the way that that's worked is staff would send out an advertisement on the internet, perhaps on the cable television channel, on a newspaper. on the internet, perhaps on the cable television channel, or on a newspaper, and alert the community that there are some advisory committee positions open. The next step would be to take those applications to a city council committee, or the city council for an interview process, and then finally, the city council would make the appointments to the G-PAC committee. G-PAC representative number fourteen is intended to be kept as an open position to allow for a potential future appointment of an additional member, should the G-PAC determine that there is some representation in the community that needs to be met later, a little bit later in the process, once the process has begun. And if, if the G-PAC decides that that's necessary, we would go through very quickly the same public process for appointment and interviews. The anticipated length of the G-PAC service would be about eighteen months to two years, and really would sunset at the end of the general plan update process. And staff is recommending council approves the creation of the charge, the membership, and the appointment process of the ad hoc general plan advisory committee, and I'm here to answer any questions of the mayor or council.
So this is the next hot volunteer opportunity for the citizens of San Carlos?
That's right.
All we're asking for is about twenty-four months of service, only once a month, all right, Al?
Only once a month.
Unless you're on exception, maybe, then it could be twice a month, or?
Right, could be more, could be a little less.
Depends on your level of interest, okay? Well, I think it's an exciting process. Questions for all?
Yeah, just one. And that is, the G-PAC roster, number eleven, why we, why we would be focusing particularly on building construction industry?
Well, I mean, the land use section of the ordinance could have implications for construction activities, or where they take place, or the intensity of construction, or land use changes. And it's better to, we thought it would be better to have the construction community represented. If they're not, they could cry foul and say, well, we weren't involved in the process. So it's just better to include them in the process.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. My understanding, but I just wanna make sure that I'm having the correct assumption, is that the commissioners that would be on the G-PAC roster would in fact be representing their commission's viewpoints and perspective, and all of, they would have discussions amongst their commissioners about some of the issues and concerns and some of the subparts. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
The second question is actually with number nine, how are we gonna define environmental community? I mean, is it going to be like card-carrying member of the Sierra Club type of, or is it really just someone that has been active in the, in the community around issues that would have some environmental bearing, perhaps like, like our Creek and Natural Resources Subcommittee?
I think it would be, it could be either or. And, and so it's a pretty, it's a pretty flexible determination. I mean, we recognize that the Natural Resources Task Force, and Fluke and others, and Sustainable San Carlos, there's a lot of groups out there. And what would be preferable is to get somebody who's sort of represents a broad spectrum, maybe someone who's on the Natural Resources Committee, but also a member of the Sierra Club, or also a member of San Carlos Green.
Okay, so it's just really more someone that has an interest in natural resources and environmental types of issues?
Yes, and that, that's part of the application process. We would look at their credentials and make an assessment, and the council would actually make the final determination.
Then, on number ten, I think we should probably have either one, either increase it to a representative of the east side, and add another position for HIA. But I think that we've got to get the Harbor Industrial Association at least at the table. And I think that their interests are going to be different than sort of south of Holly, that east side. So I don't know if we add it, another position?
Is there any of that for discussion amongst us?
Yeah, we can, but I'll just throw this out there, that I think that we were missing. And then the last one is for number fourteen, I think we actually ought to have two positions, sort of at large, maybe even three, because first of all, I think we, you know, the more participation we can have in this, you know, I would hate to say, you know, we're limiting it to fourteen people, and I'm sorry, we're, we're set in stone at that. If we have, you know, seventeen really interested people who we think would add value to that, I would like to see it broaden just a little bit, and I think it provides the roster with just some ability to add some additional resources to that as well.
May I have a question, Gary? On your side?
No, no, I was just commenting that the, the direction is from us as a council. I think we have yet to discuss, you know, Mr. Savae has provided us with a recommendation, and we can discuss amongst ourselves who is to be on there and who isn't. This isn't set in stone yet, we need to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you, if you thought that I was giving direction to Mr. Savae, it certainly wasn't intended to be that way.
Sure. It's a, you know, it's a nature thing.
Bud? Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. One is from staff. It wasn't explicit in this document, perhaps it's been in other discussions, but who's gonna spearhead this committee from staff?
We have myself and a senior planner inside the department in addition to, so that, that'll be the internal spearhead, I guess. And we have the consultants, which will be integral to the process as well. So we'll have a team of people from the city that will be ushering this throughout the process.
Right, just, I have an affection for leadership, and although I appreciate the team production, obviously, it's, we need all the public input we can on this at the same time, you know, I wouldn't, if it's gonna be you, Mr. Savae, then I would say, attack it with passion, and we're behind you all the way, at least from this perspective. And then the other thing is, I realize we have an east side residential and, you know, neighborhood representative, which makes sense to me. There's also residential neighborhoods that have been affected by the whole Trader Joe's area, that area of South Laurel, the Wheeler Plaza area, which are perhaps under the auspices of the general plan that we'll get into. Did you consider another neighborhood representative from the west side residential population that's, you know, in that same region? Is that on here?
It's, the west side was, it's a large area, you're right. I mean, it's, it's big, everything west of El Camino. So the west side representative was intended to represent the whole east side, or the whole west side, rather. But the other thing to anticipate is that we're gonna get a lot of public input in there, you know, we're gonna invite the public and have community meetings outside of the G-PAC meetings, and so we're gonna encourage the whole community to get involved from all over, from.
Right, I was just wondering whether we wanna be specific to that neighborhood, just because I know that we've all gotten feedback on, you know, traffic and different things in that area, that we might wanna be specific. We can always consider that in our interview process, I suppose, as the location, but if we, if we were more specific, we might get more applications from that area, or certainly if we agreed as a council on that criteria, which perhaps we can discuss as well. Thank you.
Just let me, oh, go ahead, Bud.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
One question now regarding timing. First of all, when do you want a selection from a council, so we begin thinking about who wants to volunteer for that? And secondly, when would we anticipate interviews for the positions that are not commissioners with established commissions?
Well, the, that's an interesting question. The first one, the council has a couple of options, I believe historically, from what I understand, historically, the whole council has done the interviews prior to a city council meeting, will schedule some time before, so it's the whole council. But you also have the option of appointing a subcommittee of a couple of council members to go out and do that, and then report back to the rest of the council. So that's, that's an option. With regard to when we'd like this to happen, we'd like it to happen very quickly. We wanna get this done. We, we think that it'll take about four weeks to get the word out to the community, get everything processed, and to get some candidates before a council. So about four weeks is when we'd like to get this done.
All right, thank you. Bud?
I have a question. I've never gone through this process before, I assume you have.
I have not here, of course.
No, 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 I know, I have.
Yes, other cities, yeah.
But you have. My question is, I mean, twenty-four months, a lot of things can happen in twenty-four months, so number four, after six months goes, can't do it anymore. Number three, after ten months is, I just can't come anymore. How do you, how do you, I mean, how does it work? Do you have like alternates, or, I mean, obviously you replace that individual, but I mean, how do they catch up, or what is there, are their minutes dispersed? What's the practical, how does it, or do you just lose, people come on and they just, they aren't, they aren't aware of what, got discussed, and this is, anyway, maybe, I think you know where I'm going here.
Very, I do. The intent is that, that when a council or, or whether a commission or a committee appoints a member, that, that they would also have an alternate. So if that person had, you know, some issues, they couldn't go anymore, that alternate would be brought up to speed. In addition, the, the idea is that the, the person that's on the G-PAC would go back and report regularly to the Parks and Rec Commission or the Planning Commission, so that they'd be up to speed. And so that's the intent, is to keep all these committees, they would be in charge of keeping their committees up to speed, and they would have an alternate that could step in.
So then, so then basically, all these committees, the city council, the planning commission, all these committees would be getting copies of minutes each month?
We would, yeah, provide any materials that are developed by the G-PAC, yes.
So then, then people could keep, if they're reading it, they could at least keep up on the, on the minutes relative to what's going on, so they wouldn't come on cold, so to speak.
Yes, and also, we would have a general plan component to the city's website, so that everything would be posted on the, on the website and available to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more question. The G-PAC, would it be just making recommendations by consent, or would they actually have to be voting on certain items?
The intent is to have most decisions made by consensus, but as you know, that sometimes that doesn't work, or happen. So they would need to take votes on occasion, if there was disagreement or dissension. So that's, that's how, that's the idea.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Al? We're all looking forward to the process, Al. Why don't we have a vote on the recommendation made by Al, and start the process? Does anyone have to move?
Just per my, my comments, is there interest in adding some additional open positions, as well as a position for the Harbor Industrial Association?
Let me think, Al, seems to me that does make sense.
Well, although the consultant isn't here tonight, I can hear them talking to me, and, and the idea there was, I know that the consultant is concerned about getting, you know, if you get a super-large group, it gets unwieldy, but I've, I've worked with some fairly large groups, and you can still build consensus with a larger group. So I think that the HIA is some component that could be added to this, and probably add a lot of benefit to this, to the G-PAC. So I think that's, I think we're, staff is fine with that. I think if we go to too many more people, it starts to get to the point where it gets unwieldy.
I have a suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And that is that currently, we, you know, from the council, we have, I forget what we call ourselves, when we go to the commissions and?
Liaison.
Liaison, there is the word, thank you. So we act as a liaison, so if we have the city council member or the mayor act as a liaison, simply as a liaison, you know, we're certainly going to have our opportunity when it finally comes to us to give all the input we want. So if, if the council member or the mayor acted as a liaison, and perhaps as a chair of the committee, but a non-voting member and not too much input, perhaps that opens up the room for the HIA member. And I would also see an importance, that's why I asked the question about voting, some importance perhaps of keeping this at an odd number, so that you don't get stuck with a tie vote.
I like that idea, you know, the liaison idea. That kinda takes us out of the, the circle of discussion, but makes us a part of the process. So that would allow, they could add another couple for, and you've only gained two out of fourteen, so now we got sixteen, still a small group.
Well, it's actually, the way I see it, it'd be like fifteen. An odd number would be fifteen, which is one more than the fourteen. And the, so I would, I would propose that we do add in addition, take out number one, which is the city council member, and just assign a liaison, and then replace that one with HIA, and then increase the open position to two open positions, which then brings the number to fifteen.
You got it, sounds like a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second? On the paper?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it? Thank you, Al. It's gonna be a good round, I can feel it coming.
He said on his way out.
Yeah, tell ya. Easy for me to say, huh? All right. Okay, we're at item 12B, consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute a new contract for professional planning services and processing the city's San Carlos Transit Village, not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, all of which, on my note, will be paid for by another party, which is always the best way to hire a consultant. Anything left, Al? That's pretty, pretty much the summary. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, San Carlos has received an application from legacy partners for a new transit-oriented development on the Samtrans property on the east side of El Camino Real. And the seven-acre site contains the train depot area, which would remain. The proposed mixed-use project would, would contain two-hundred-and-eighty-one units of apartments and about three, thirty-four thousand six hundred square feet of retail and office. And selection of a lead planner is really essential to carry this project forward through the project review and entitlement process. An RFP was released and a selection process was completed, and the consultant recommendation is based on the extensive level of experience and technical skill of the consultant, the track record of success, ability to meet established guidelines, cost, work product output, and also the quality of the written inaugural proposal. Staff is requesting a new contract approval for the lead planner consulting services of Whitney McNair, and the lead planner will coordinate the complex entitlement, environmental, and legal process of the project. Ms. McNair has extensive experience in the management of large, complex, transit-oriented development projects, and is a principal of the Metropolitan Planning Group, which is a private consulting practice. Ms. McNair's depth of understanding and experience of the complexities of transit-oriented development should reduce startup time and ensure strategic commencements of efforts. And it's recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for this consulting contract for the San Carlos Transit Village project, and that concludes the staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the recommendation? Motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teagueal Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. All right, folks, that concludes our meeting. We'll gather again on August thirteenth. Thank you for everyone.